Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall and the Planning Commission meeting for this month. Few housekeeping items, just to reiterate from the video that you just watched. We would ask everyone to please silence your electronic devices. And also, we are looking forward to hearing from everyone tonight who wishes to be heard, and we would invite you to come forward at the appropriate time, and please keep your comments to five minutes or less, and also to bring forward new items that have not already been previously discussed during that period. Right now, it does appear that we have a quorum this evening, and we will go ahead and get our business rolling with the consent agenda. Denise?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item one is approval of minutes from the Planning Commission briefing on Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022, and the Planning Commission meeting on August 3rd, 2022. Item 2A is petition rezone 016976, 2022, rezoning from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District located at 303 West 26th Street. Item 2B, petition, conditional use 016900, 2022, conditional use permit for an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment within 500 feet of a sensitive land use located at 3505 East 10th Street. Item 2C, petition, conditional use 016956, 2022, conditional use permit for an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment within 500 feet of a sensitive land use located at 7400 East Oak Grove Trail. Item 2D, petition, conditional use 016968, 2022, conditional use permit for an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment within 500 feet of a sensitive land use located at 1105 North Minnesota Avenue. Item 2E, petition, conditional use 016975, 2022, conditional use permit for an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment within 500 feet of a sensitive land use located at 611 Northwest Avenue. Item 2F, petition, conditional use 017006, 2022, conditional use permit for an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment within 500 feet of a sensitive land use located at 2409 West Russell Street. Item 2G, petition, alternate site plan 16652, 2022, alternative site plan for an alternative open space plan for an apartment complex located east of East 10th Street and north of Arrowhead Parkway. Item 3, consent agenda approval.
Thank you, Denise. At this point, I'll ask the commissioners, are there any items that were listed that you would like to see moved to the regular agenda? Seeing none. City staff, were there any items at this time that we needed to move from the consent agenda to regular? Nothing from staff. At this point, members of the public, if any of the items that were just read, if you would like to see one of those items or multiples of those items moved to the regular agenda for further discussion and individual vote, please come forward now and let us know. Seeing none, I will look for Commissioner Action to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as read. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Consent agenda has been unanimously approved. I will now entertain a motion to approve the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the regular agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the regular agenda this evening, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Regular agenda has been approved. Denise?
Item 5A, petition rezone 16794, 2022, rezoning from the AG Agriculture District to the RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density and the RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density Districts located at 7500 and 7608 South Hanson Place.
Mr. Chair, I need to sit this one out.
Thank you, Commissioner Lukey.
Mr. Chair, I have what could possibly perceive as a conflict of interest in this item, so I'm also going to recuse myself.
Thank you, Commissioner Nyberg.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application by Sayer Associates, Thad Roberts. The owner is Jason Benson with Bentwood Place Incorporated. The applicant is proposing to construct a two-story apartment complex on the north side of this lot of the property, adjacent to those existing townhomes, excuse me, along the north property line, and then transition to some three-story apartments in the middle and then the southern portion of the property, adjacent to the major arterial street of West 85th Street. Some existing streets that will be accessing the site, so 83rd Street will be the main access off of Beale Avenue in about the center portion of the lot. There's an existing rural street that's on the west portion of the spot or the site, Hanson Place. Just one housekeeping thing is when a developer does come in to construct this specific development, their half of Hanson Place will need to be paved as part of this development for additional access. A neighborhood meeting was held on August 17th between 5:30 and 7:00 PM at the Harrisburg Explorer Elementary School, just to the northeast. We had roughly 20 residents in attendance, along with the developer and the applicant. City staff included Shannon Austin and myself to discuss and answer any questions that the neighbors may have on this specific project. Some of the main concerns that were raised were drainage, traffic, and then three-story apartments along that north property line. As you can see, the city is looking to actually buy a portion of that in the southeast corner to do a significant drainage pond, and then there'll be some additional drainage throughout the middle of this property that should alleviate some of those specific concerns. And also then, with the access as indicated before, Hanson Place will need to be paved on the developer's side as part of this project, and then they will have access on 83rd Street to the east through those existing apartments. And then, the other concern that we had heard was the existing fourplexes that are to the north of this property. They were concerned about three-story apartments overlooking their fourplexes. The developer did then agree then to change that zoning from RA2 to RA1, which as a planning commission, we know that that would only allow two stories then in 24 units. That should provide a little bit better of a transition from those existing townhomes along the north property line. The rezoning proposal follows the Shakesu Falls Comprehensive Plan and the use is appropriate for the intersection of a major arterial street and collector. The use will require those Level A and Level B buffer yards, not only to the properties within the city, but also to those existing properties to the west, and then a couple of properties within the site will also have those same, be required the same buffer yards, even though they're outside of city limits. The applicant is proposing, as indicated, those two-story 24 units along the north property line, and then everything else along south of 83rd Street, they would be kind of upzoning to more of the three-story and 48 units, and that should provide that good transition from townhomes to two-story apartments to three-story apartments next to a major arterial street, which within the next 10 years, we know 85th Street's going to be a major arterial once that interchange is constructed on 29. Because the subject application is consistent with the Shakesu Falls Comprehensive Plan, and the applicant has provided a better transition from those townhomes to the north, staff does recommend approval of this rezon request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jason. Commissioners, any questions for staff on this? Very good. None at this time, Jason. I'll reserve the right to call you back up with anything that comes up. Is the applicant here this evening? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Name is Jason Benson with Bentwood Place Incorporated. We're at 4600 Vista Lane, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 57105.
Very good. Anything else to add about your project?
I think Jason covered it pretty well. Does anybody have any questions?
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any member of the audience that would like to come forward and speak on this item? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please. Me either.
What's that?
Me either.
Oh, okay. All right. So I'm Aaron Olson. I'm 47, 47138, 85th Street. So I'm in the little bottom corner there. Been there nine years this month, and since I've been there since the spring, I've had construction nonstop. So now, I know I'm just one little place, and it's just me and my son, but now I'm going to have possibly 20 to 30 people in my backyard. I used to be a farmer. Sorry. That's all.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for gentlemen? Okay, very good. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Chad Lewin. I live at 26977 Hanson Place, so I'm in the upper left-hand corner, just across the street from the proposed rezoning. I just wanted to give you a little bit of flavor there, so to the west of the proposed zone change is, you know, that today, that's a gravel road there that goes north-south there, Hanson Place. Us residents maintain that gravel road. All of the residents, to the west there, we're all single-family homes, like on acre lots and that type of thing, so we're, you know, we're, our kind of use of the area is really, you know, we're spread out, and we're there for a reason. We kind of want to stay spread out, and so my concern, just, you know, I appreciate going to a, I think it's an RA, RA1, at least in the north side, and RA2. I guess I would propose, my hope would be that, you know, we could keep that all single-family home or townhome back in that area. I don't know the exact code of that, but for my property values and, you know, my, the quality of living that we have there now, to me feels a bit in jeopardy by having apartment buildings there. So that's all I, that was all I wanted to point out.
Well, very good. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Lewin? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this particular item? Please feel free to, one at a time, come up and state your name and address for the
I'm Craig Yoder, and I live at 26988 Cactus Place, just to the west of the development. I have a couple of safety issues that I'd like to bring forward to the commission. I got a handout for those I'd like to pass out real quick. Once you get the handout, I'll give you a second to look it over. The concern we have is the increased traffic flow, one for Explorer Elementary School on the east of the development, and the other one is for the 85th Street, which is actually Highway 85th Street. If you live in that area out there, you know from Hughes Avenue to the west, that's posted 45. Most people kind of ignore that and go 50-55. If you'll all take a look there, the area in question is right in the middle there. It's in green, and if you look on that, right in the middle there, that green section that you've put in there, proposed roads, you'll see the two little stars. That's their entrance and exits for the establishment. If you look at number one, that exits out on 83rd Street, that is just a small road there. It's multi-family row houses there. The street is not designed for the traffic flow that is going to be coming out of that district, and once you come out of there, you have two options. You can turn north and go right past Explorer Elementary, right through the school zone, which eventually is down to 69th Street. Or you can turn south on Beale, go down to 85th Street to a semi-uncontrolled intersection. It's just a stop, presently a stop sign, which I'm sure they'll change, but at the present time, it's kind of uncontrolled with high-speed traffic going through there. If you look over at number two, star number two, that's the Hanson Road, gravel road that they referred to. If you come out of there, you have three options. You can turn north and go up to Shipton, which is a residential section that was referred to, where the people would like to have a say about the apartments along the north. You can turn right there, and that dead ends right into the school zone. Any one of those roads along that development, they're all dead into the school zone. You have increased traffic with all those kids. Going back to star number two, if you go straight, that goes into the residential section that was just talked about. That area is not part of the city. It's out of the city limits. Like he said, it's an unmaintained gravel road. The residents take care of that themselves. If the project does go through, the residents have already talked about putting a gate there to keep traffic out of their area. If you come out of that number two and turn left, you go down to 85th Street again, which you will have to turn right. And then the next intersection is an uncontrolled intersection. It's six lanes by three lanes. You cannot make a U-turn there on 85th Street and go east. You have to go an additional quarter mile to the west before you can make a U-turn and come back east. So there's some congestion of traffic that we're concerned about. 83rd Street is not designed to hold the traffic flow, and of course, the school zone with the extra traffic is what we're concerned about also. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Yoder?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, yes, sir, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Waybright. I live at 26987 Hanson Place, so just to the southwest there, right where Sunny View Place meets Hanson Place. So I just want to tell you a little bit of context here. Certainly, I was surprised when I got the letter a couple of weeks ago to see this project and to see that there is plans for a road to cut straight through right in front of my house. You know, part of, I've lived at my property for about four years now, and part of the allure of our neighborhood is privacy and low traffic. It's gravel road. All of us live there because we appreciate that overall area. Now, we're trying to build an apartment complex with up to 148 housing units in there, and you can imagine that's going to only increase traffic 20, 30 times or more onto Hanson Place as that property would be established. So that's definitely top of mind, especially living right there where that road is going to intersect right by my place. The other piece I want to talk about is just the compatibility and the overall character of our neighborhood. So right now, as you've kind of heard, most of the neighborhood and surrounding area is townhomes and single-family homes. So there's some apartments down at 69th and Beale, but the rest of the three-story apartments are south of 85th Street. So it seems like we're kind of forcing in some three-story apartments into a place where it doesn't really feel right. You can see right there, right adjacent to that footprint, there's two single-family homes that are going to have apartments right built next to them and sandwiched in between, which you don't see that anywhere else in Sioux Falls. Again, a significant concern, and it seems like it's really just incompatible with kind of the nature of the area and other areas of Sioux Falls as well. The last thing I want to mention is, you know, we talk about if this does go through and the developer being responsible for half of the upgrade to Hanson Place, which would need to be upgraded. I think there's going to be a lot of challenge with convincing residents along Hanson Place to help fund a road that only needs to be upgraded because of a development that's going in right next to it. So as a property owner along Hanson Place, I certainly would not be happy to have to help pay for a road that is perfectly fine for our use currently, but only needs to be upgraded because 200 or 300 more people are going to be moving into that property and needing to use that road. So, you know, obviously some significant concerns. You know, and all of this is on top of reduced property values with this type of land use and, you know, just changing the overall dynamic and character of the neighborhood where we all reside.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions? I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Yes, please come forward.
Oh, go forward.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Steve Munson, 47106, 85th Streets, which is in the southwest, just west of this property. My question is, that lower apartment building, you say that's a three-floor apartment building, the one on the lower left?
That is on the plan, yes.
Okay, you made accommodations with, on the north side, going down to two floors, but Mr. Olson was just up here, and he lives right south of that, and yet you're putting a three-floor apartment right next to his property. You know, you make accommodations on the north side for your existing planning, but you make no accommodations to the existing properties that are there, and that's what you're hearing from us, is what you're not taking in accommodation, the existing properties. You know, I guess we take offense to that, that you give deference to those people up there, but you don't give any deference to the people to the west of that property. Is it because we're not a part of your city? You know, we take offense to that, too, and you're going to be pushing traffic in there. Are you going to be maintaining that gravel road? You said you're going to pave the east side of that road. How are you going to maintain the traffic, the extra traffic that comes through there? When they come down there, they can only go to the west. I guess our biggest problem with you is you're not accommodating the people, the existing properties that are there. You know, you don't answer to us, you know, you're unelected, but you make decisions based and affect our property values, you know, and we have no recourse against you. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Munson. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item, please? While you're stepping up, just to reiterate, we have been hearing about traffic, the road condition on Hanson Place, density of additional individuals in the Explorer Elementary, and of course, the proximity of three-story to single-family. So with that, please state your name and address for the record, and love to hear your take on this.
Hi, my name is Diane Haran, and I live at 4431 West Shipton Street. So we live in one of the fourplexes right behind where the development, you know, is going to take place. I have, my husband and I have a couple of concerns. One is, you know, when you have apartments, we think about garbage. Is it going to be garbage buttoned up against our properties, and then we smell it? You know, that is one thing that we're really worried about. And then we're worried about the drainage still, because right behind us, they put in a culvert that drains, and it goes, it travels through that whole thing, and nobody there now maintains it, and it's right behind my backyard, and all I see is weeds and stuff, and then when it rains heavy, which we haven't had a lot lately, or even when it snows in the wintertime, it will build up in there, and the water goes all over, even over Hanson Street, and it goes into our property and to other properties, too. So the drainage is a huge concern, and also the apartment complex. Since it is a nice area and everything, we really hope that it's not going to be low-income apartments, because I know on 85th and Beale, they turned that one down, so I'm hoping that in that area, we would not have that, because it would decrease our property values. Okay?
Very good.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions? Very good. Thank you very much. And I believe there is, yes, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Nancy Dirks. I'm at 4313 West Shipton Street, and my main concern is density. I've already got townhomes, there are rental townhomes, built behind me. I would like to see the applicant come up with a different proposal, definitely not RA2. RA1, for me, would be acceptable. I'm not sure about the other people, but I would like to see the applicant come up with a different proposal that would be more acceptable to the neighborhood. I suppose we could let this go forward if you approve it tonight, but I don't think we're going to have any difficulty at all getting 40% of the signatures to just shut it down totally, after it passes the city commission. So my recommendation is alternate plan by the applicant.
Any questions? Appreciate it. Thank you. Yes. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Deb Yoder. The address is 26988 Cactus Place, so you've already heard from my husband. Obviously, the points that have already been made, I feel, are important as well. When you talk about Explorer, you're talking about traffic, but has anybody given any consideration to the number of children that are going into these 300, you know, 150 units, basically? Some of those are going to be children. Has anyone given any consideration to the number of children in there that are going to impact the Harrisburg School District, going to that school? Not just traffic walking, or riding, or being dropped off, but the actual impact to the school, the educational system itself. That, to me, is important. Other options, other points I'd like to make, my husband commented on 85th Street from Hughes West is basically a three-quarter mile racetrack. There is no place for those of us that come out and have to turn right to be able to go east. We have to go down to the end and make that U-turn where nothing is marked, and I'm sure as you continue to improve 85th Street, that's going to disappear. I would also point out to you that people, because they cannot turn left, will go eastbound in the westbound lane on 85th Street to get where they want to go, so keep that in mind. That's obviously a gross, illegal move, but it's done, just like when the people, talking about traffic, when the people come out of 83rd or Shipton or the other two streets there, and they go north, and they go to 69th Street, they go through an area that is 25 miles an hour, and there is a sign there that flashes telling them to slow down, and they don't. You're going to have the same type of thing going on with respect to traffic and speed. You also talked about improving half of Hanson Place. I don't understand how you improve half of it. Is that just the east side of it, so that anybody coming out and going north has an improved side, but anybody going south does not have an improved side? You talk about char- You talk about charging the people for the improvements, and charging those who are impacted by the improvement at the current time. The people on the other half of the street who are not impacted will be charged at a later date when they are annexed. I don't understand how that works. Those comments are based on something that Thad Roberts responded to questions for us. Ryan had posed questions and Thad responded. He talked about the improvement on Hanson, excuse me, Hanson, or the partial improvement. So I don't understand how that works. Now, because I'm on Cactus Place, my concern is that that traffic may come through Sunnyview. 83rd is supposed to connect Sunnyview, come to Cactus. Cactus does not go north at the present time, it only goes south, so that brings traffic by my house. A concern of mine is what happens in the future. We're not talking, we're talking about not annexing properties right now. The city will not force annexation. I don't know what that phrase means, force annexation. In 2015, the city came to us and strongly suggested that we should be annexed by the end of that year and then rezoned as commercial, which was very unsatisfactory to all of us that lived on Hanson and Cactus and Sunnyview in that area. After discussion, they agreed that perhaps because our lots were one acre and more, that that might be rural residential, which would be more acceptable to us. And as was already commented on, we have large lots, we have a rural area, a feel, and we'd like to maintain that. When, if this goes through, and when they start annexing, are they going to force us? What does that mean? If they don't force us, do people request annexation one lot at a time, so that one lot is annexed, but the people on either side are not? What does that do to the taxes? And if, as you come around, you annex us, what are we going to be? Are we going to be forced commercial, which is what the city told us seven years ago? Or what are you going to do? If you force annexation, do you come in and condemn our properties to take them away? What happens? Nobody has addressed what happens legally when things like that, you know, looking down the road, down into the future, what happens? It's already been mentioned about the integrity of the area. Again, we're rural residential, even though we may not be zoned as such. So you put up these apartments, and we're hemmed in. We're not rural residential anymore. We're a sore thumb that sticks out. We like what we are, we'd like to stay there. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions, commissioners? Appreciate it, Mrs. Yoder.
Thank you.
So anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Sorry, sir, you've already had your chance. Anyone else, then? Okay, with the abundance of items that were mentioned, I do want to have some members of staff, as well as the applicant, address certain things. But first, I'd like to ask the commission for action for discussion purposes.
In our typical approach to these, I move for approval of this item for discussion purposes.
We have a motion. And a second. Discussion items now. First thing I would like to do, yeah, Jason, if you could come up. Items were mentioned as concerned around traffic, around the upgrade of Hanson Place, around drainage, and I'm kind of interested, from a traffic perspective, I was kind of curious, there wasn't any mention of that in the staff report. So some of these items, if you could give some additional flavor from staff's perspective, it'd be appreciated.
Sure. 83rd Street is obviously a local street, but it connects to Beale, and then Beale's obviously a major collector that's going to connect 69th Street and 85th Street. Those two streets do have adequate width when they're constructed to handle the traffic. Beale and 85th Street eventually will have a signalized intersection once the traffic counts get to that point. So typically, most of the people from here are going to go that way if you want to actually turn across traffic and go to the east. Hanson Place, that would then be, when this is developed, that would then, the east half would be paid for and paved by the developer. The city would like to annex that street in, so we can maintain it, no longer the county, township. With a paved road, we would like to maintain that then, and be able to do the snow removal on it as part of that.
So just to clarify that real quick, developers developing one half of it, the city would then take over and develop the second half and provide maintenance?
Yep, so we do that typically quite a bit around the outskirts of the city, if you've seen, because typically, we will run up against existing rural residential or existing property owners that don't want to annex in, don't want to develop their property. So we will construct half of a section to utilize that, or the developer will, to utilize that for traffic purposes, until the other side either annexes in as part of a development, then they will construct the other half, or if they would annex in voluntarily, then they would be assessed those, the other west half of that street.
Very good. Now the drainage plan for this, as much as you can talk to.
Sure. As looked, as you can see on the plan here, the city is looking at buying that southeast corner for a significant detention pond. The drainage here actually kind of runs south and north. The south side of 85th Street, there's already detention pond, it's not quite big enough or adequate for that specific development. And then for this one, so we needed to buy some property on the north side of 85th Street for some additional holding of water. And then they will have to obviously provide drainage calculations, a drainage plan that will not change what currently is drained there. It will have to drain as if it's a cornfield or if it's a grass field. So they will have to provide all that going north, then within that existing drainage channel, or if they would like to move the drainage channel, they can do that as long as they're figuring out where that's going to go and that drainage water can go.
Very good, thank you for that. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair. Jason, as I look at the south side of the two west three-story buildings, it appears it's a very skinny buffer yard. Can you speak to what the requirement for the buffer yards are for those zones that are adjacent to single-family?
Yep, thank you for that. So I know one of the gentlemen said that why we don't protect those existing rural residential. As indicated, those are all zoned ag. If you have a property within the city that's zoned ag, we don't require a buffer yard at all. However, when we have single-family houses outside of the city and the county, we still require the developer to buffer as if they're single-family houses, even though they're zoned ag. So a three-story apartment next to a single-family is required to have a Level C buffer yard, which is a 30-foot setback. And then in that buffer area, they either got to do a four-foot berm or a six-foot fence, and then significant landscape units along any of those areas that touch existing single-family uses that are specifically east of Hanson Place.
So what I'm hearing you say on those south sides, this plan isn't quite accurate yet, it doesn't have enough buffer yard yet to represent that requirement, so.
Yeah, they'll need a little bit more space that they're showing there, and obviously, this is just conceptual. When a developer buys this specific lot, obviously, they'll have to provide all of those requirements of the zoning ordinance.
Right. Because I could tell from the earlier comments that this would be more protection than what seems to be represented here, so thank you for clarifying.
Correct, yep. And then one of the other comments, I think it's important to note that, I mean, I get it, there's a rural residential neighborhood to the west, and there's not a plan for the city to city-initiate, annex them. They can stay rural as long as they want, but from a city's perspective, I mean, think about all of our major arterial streets that connect to I-29. They're huge, right? There's a lot of commercial, there's a lot of apartments that go miles to the east and west of those interchanges. So from a staff perspective, we're planning for the future of 85th Street, and typically with those kind of interchanges onto 29, this is typically what you would see. And the cities, when they came out to Bathos addition, didn't say, you guys should zone it commercial. We're saying, you could zone it commercial, which would be the most money that they could get if they were to sell to a developer on that specific intersection, not that you have to zone it as commercial. They're allowed to stay there as long as they want to stay there. Absolutely, we're not going to go in there and city-initiating, annex them in at all. That's not a plan at this time. We're just telling them that's what staff would support, and typically, that's what we would see on their particular properties.
Very good. Mr. Chair, could we go back through how Hanson Place would be developed? Would you review that again?
So Hanson Place, the east side of that would be required by the developer because it's a local slash collector street. They are required to pay for that. So when this property develops, and the current owner is looking at marketing it, he's not looking at developing it at this time, when this property develops, the developer would then need to, would then need to, excuse me, pave the east side of Hanson Place. The city would like to annex that in and take over the control of that street, so we can maintain it for snow removal and obviously fixing it, because it would then be dedicated to the city, and we would be in charge of maintenance of that particular, particular road if it's annexed into the city. And so the west half, then, either that or they would construct all of it, and then the west half, that would wait, and that would be assessed to the property owners once they annex into the city, which we do not have plans right now to annex them into the city unless they would like to voluntarily.
So they would be assessed if they're annexed?
As part of the city, because then they would have, the city would come in and pay for the construction of that road, and we'd assess the adjoining property owners, which we do all over town if we have those specific gravel roads that we need to upgrade, they get assessed to the property owners.
Mr. Chair. I think, Jason, there was one question about, just to bring it up, is each individual property owner going to have the timeline they choose to be brought into the city and thereby assessed? Or is that all as a single group? I think there were a couple of questions.
No, we would, every property owner, as long as they're contiguous to the city, has the right to, or voluntarily annex into the city at any time, but you'd have to be contiguous. So any properties that don't front Hanson Place there, obviously wouldn't be contiguous, so we wouldn't be able to allow them to annex into the city unless we got another one that would be touching.
Okay, thank you.
So it sounds like no matter what plan, what development plan is going to come into place here, that road will be annexed.
That road would need to be paved, yes. No matter if it's townhomes or single-family, even though it probably is never going to be single-family with the sheer volumes of traffic that 85th Street's going to have it in the next 10 years.
Mr. Chair. Jason, can you kind of recap how we got to the split zoning on the north and the south? Why the RA1 and RA2 makes sense?
Yep, originally, the applicant was requesting RA2 on the entire parcel, which, in a situation like this, does meet our comprehensive plan. Like I indicated, some of those concerns from the people along Shipton, and then the existing two properties west of Hanson Place, they had concerns about three stories. So the developer did agree to go down to RA1 to provide really even a better transition from RD2 to RA1 to RA2 as you get adjacent to that major arterial street.
Any other questions, commissioners? Very good. Thank you, Jason.
Sorry, I have one more question about the traffic. Are there going to be additional stop signs, stoplights, things like that put into place, or is that up to another department to decide?
Well, there won't, so Hanson Place is going to be a ride-in, ride-out once 85th Street, and I'm not sure if that's four lanes yet, but once that has a median with four lanes on there, Hanson Place will be a ride-in, ride-out, because it's an existing road. The major, the other major one will be to the west, I believe it's Townsley, and then start curving up towards the north. Beale Avenue will be, on 85th Street, will be a lighted intersection, and that's all based on when those traffic counts get to a certain number, they warrant those upgrades to the signalized intersection. So eventually, that will be there. Otherwise, they'll be able to go north, which is Beale Avenue is a major collector street that's going to take traffic between 69th and 85th Street by a school, which we have lots of elementary schools that are located on major collector streets.
Very good. Last call for questions for staff. Thank you, Jason. Could I have the applicant come forward again, please? Just wanted to have an opportunity for you to add to any of the discussion as well, based on neighborhood comments and such.
Yeah, I just wanted to, the, there's a lot of questions about Hanson Place, and I thought we went through that at our public meeting, but I think Jason covered it rather well, that it will be paved and maintained by the city and/or the developer when they come along. I am not going to be the end developer on this, I'm merely the owner. And so many things could be changed by the developer if they so choose. The RA1 is exactly the same zoning as what's already written next door. As far as property values, the property values out there have gone up tremendously as soon as they paved 85th Street. And so, anyway.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
You just said you thought you took care of Hanson Place at your meeting, could you expand on that?
Well, I think, yeah, I don't know if everyone here was at the meeting, but I thought we covered that at the meeting as far as what was going to be done about that, and no one's going to be assessed any fees for that unless they go inside the city limits. And again, I'm not sure if everybody here was at the meeting, but, so that was just something I wanted to reiterate.
Very good. Any other questions, commissioners? Appreciate it, thank you very much. Commissioners, we have a motion on the floor for purposes of discussion. I will now entertain discussion amongst us. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair. First off, as I look at this proposed plan, it's always important to keep in mind that these things are based upon zoning decisions. This plan isn't necessarily the final plan, I think you even heard Jason say that a little bit ago. There are some buffer yard issues that need to be resolved to what our requirements are. I think all of those will improve this condition significantly. Those separations that was talked about being no accommodations, I think absolutely our zoning ordinance is set up to try and provide accommodations for those single-family homes being adjacent to other functions in the city. These things are never perfect. We try to make them as close as we can to something that works in a zone between existing property owners. But again, we're always looking for that careful balance between property rights and neighbor rights, because we want to respect both wherever we can. So that always comes to the top of my personal list, and I know this body's list as well. As I look at this plan, I look at the adjacency of the two RA1s. That makes some sense to me, and I know that it's a little bit close to the western single-family homes. But the thing I kind of like about this plan is the buildings that are on that west side of this particular property are turned so that you only see the end profile of that building rather than the full width faced toward those homes. I wish they would have done that in the adjacent apartment buildings that were near my house. So I think this is actually somewhat sympathetic to that presence, which I like. The other thing I find interesting from a kind of a community planning standpoint is they collected the major streets of the larger buildings on the east side of the property. So definitely, the traffic will be encouraged to go east on 83rd and connect with the larger arterials that connect to the rest of the city, which is good planning in my mind as an overall community planner. So in general, I think this is fairly receptive to comments, and it is trying to do a lot of things in a fairly small footprint, and I'm in support of it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion?
I think it is a nice design plan. I am in agreement with, that I think this piece of land needs to be developed. It's on a major artillery road, that makes sense to me. I don't necessarily like the transition from the three-story directly to the single-family acreage setup, so I will not be voting in favor of it. But I do think that a better plan could be put in. But I do think that a better plan could be put in place for something that's possibly not a two- or three-story building.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Hearing none. At this point, then, I will call the question. All those in favor of item 5A, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign.
Yes.
Yes.
Four to two in favor. Item 5A passes. Thank you, everyone. Very, very healthy discussion. And we'll wait for our colleagues to rejoin us. Our next item, please Denise.
Item 5B, petition rezone 0169572022. Rezoning from the RD2 Townhome Suburban to the RCD Residential Cluster PUD and the RT2 Townhome Traditional and to approve the initial development plan for the site located north of East Madison Street and east of North Veterans Parkway.
The applicant here is Nielsen Development, Kelly Nielsen. The applicant is proposing to build a high-density, single-family and twin-home development up here in the northeast part of the city. It's located just north of East Madison Street and just east of South Veterans Parkway. The purpose of this request is to allow the development of a financially accessible new construction in a newly developed area of the city. To help achieve the affordability of this neighborhood, the creation of a TIF district is also being requested, which you will hear on the next item that Dustin will present. The RCD PUD is being requested to allow for the driveways to be wider than the garage and allow for parking within that front yard to make these units affordable. They needed to construct them with single-stall garages, but they did want to have a 20-foot-wide driveway to really give them two parking spaces in the driveway and then one in the specific garage. The twin homes will be constructed in the RT2 standard zoning district. Typically, those will meet most of the requirements of a normal RD2, but there are some rear yards there that they would like to get a little bit closer to that south property line and henceforth the request of the RT2. So the initial development plan. The initial development plan indicates that all uses within the PUD will be single-family residential. We're just talking about the area in yellow here. That will be part of the PUD. The RT2 will be straight zoning. So we're just specifically talking about the residential cluster development. All the buildings shall meet the minimum standards set forth in the DD7 form. Those are 25-foot front yard setbacks that would be typical, but is allowed to be reduced provided the garage and additional parking pad is maintained at that 20 feet. So there will be some that are less than 25 feet, which typically we do that in some of those urban areas or core areas of the city. We have the 20-foot front yard setbacks. And then the big thing was those attached garages. And then to really allow, as you can see by this picture, a two-parking pad essentially within the driveway to be able to have a car on one side and be able to still get in and out of the garage. And so that's one of the big things that we needed a PUD to allow because typically, we don't allow parking pads to be wider than the existing garage. So that was one thing that we worked on with the developer on this. The proposed residential cluster PUD and RT zoning meets the shapes who falls comprehensive plan. There are no conflicts with the surrounding land uses due to its isolated location in the corner of two future collectors. The single-family nature of the residential street within the PUD also serves to reduce the conflicts. The development seeks to provide that financially accessible housing in a newly developed neighborhood through adding flexibility and development requirements that aren't necessarily available in the standard zoning district. And as indicated, Dustin will provide you with some of the numbers of what the developer is targeting for sale for some of these homes. Because the subject application is consistent with the shapes who falls comprehensive plan, staff does recommend approval of the rezoning and then the initial development plan of this parcel. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jason. The commissioners, any questions for staff?
Say, Jason, you had mentioned that bordering the twin homes, which would be to the south and the west, those yards in the back are shorter than what we normally see. But it's my understanding that that single-family is owned, all that single-family property in the south and the west there is owned by the developer. Is that right?
Yep, Nielsen Development owns that entire development. So as they put in those single-family houses to the end, they will obviously know and own those lots, so.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jason. Is the applicant here this evening? Could please come forward, state your name and address, and tell us a little about your project.
Hi, Kelly Nielsen, Nielsen Construction, 27297 Wetland Road. The projects, originally, we bought 95 acres out there, started doing some of our typical developing. And we went into it with a goal of having quite a variety because it is a large parcel. Say, quite a variety of different price points of homes, anywhere from single-family up to that give or take $500,000 price range and then some fourplex and townhome projects like that. Originally, the twin homes were always planned there. But where we were going with the single-family and asking for some of the size difference and some of the driveway requirements, we originally had fourplexes and like six, eight, 10plexes laid out there. So our density probably would have been even higher than what this is. But being in many meetings trying to provide income housing or affordable housing, accessible housing, I think is the right word. And my staff and I had started working on some smaller homes during COVID and we thought maybe this would be a good time. We met with staff, approached them on it, and that's kind of how it evolved and where we're at. So it's either fourplexes or this project, and we thought we should try this one, so.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
What's the style going to be? Is it going to be like a vinyl siding and like, you know, affordable look? Or is it going to be?
During our slow time in COVID, we actually started this project with all the single-family slabs. We tried to design them like a pole barn. So I was trying to get a less expensive product, but still be structurally. But by the time we got into it, the cost of it, we weren't gaining anything as far as getting frost protection and stuff. The materials on the exterior will be very similar, if not the exact same, as I had put on any standard single-family home.
Thank you. Any other questions? Appreciate it, thank you, sir. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Gerald Foster, 25857, 477th Avenue, Sioux Falls. I own the property just to the east of the applicant's property. And my only situation on that is that commonly, I've come to understand that usually they have a double garage. And I noticed the applicant has the concrete for a double garage leading to the garages. But I've come to understand that typically, they have a double garage. And also, my other concern was that as far as keeping property values up on my side of the street to the east, they commonly have an HOA, Homeowners Association, connected with these type of projects. And I would like to see that be included into this applicant's proposal. Anything else? That's the end of my story on that.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, commissioners? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Foster. Is there anyone else here in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I will look for Commissioner Action.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion to approve and a second for item 5B. Discussion.
Mr. Chair, just want to ask staff, we don't have anything over HOAs at all, do we?
No, we don't. Those are all through the county with covenants. One of the things we did really push with the developer and one of the things that's being paid for by the TIF is we really wanted these and worked with engineering to actually shrink the right-of-way. We really wanted those internal streets to make sure that they were public streets and not private. So then these homeowners in 15 years down the line would have to pay to repave those streets. So those are public streets that will then be turned over to the city and we will maintain them, which should help throughout the life of this development.
And then he also had a question about the one-car garages. I mean, is that pretty standard in town?
So tip, one-car garage is not standard for new construction. It's important to note, anything with three bedrooms or less is only required one stall garage. Obviously, we don't see those everywhere. It seems like we see a two-bedroom house with a three-stall garage. Trying to keep these affordable and to try something new that Kelly's kind of taking a risk with. He's trying the one-stall garage. But we will, as we kind of worked with him on this, we want to make sure that we're putting those driveways in certain areas so we don't have a bunch together. We want to maintain some on-street parking, obviously. But they will also have, they're two, three bedrooms. I think they're actually two bedrooms. So you'll have most of the time just two cars there and you'll have the garage space plus the parking pad. So they'll have the parking pad driveway width of a two-stall garage, but just have a one-stall enclosed garage. So they really do have two parking spaces, just one of them is enclosed.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jason. Any further discussion, commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I'll just speak on the rezone and the initial development plan for now. As I know, we'll probably have more discussion on the TIF. But I think this definitely fits this area, in particular, the fact that for the most part, it's undeveloped. And the setbacks that I would have the most concern with, as brought forth by my question, would be the ones bordering the twin homes in that south and west sides there. And knowing that Kelly already owns those properties around there, I don't have much of a concern. So I'll be voting in favor of the rezone in the initial development plan.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, I also like how, you know, originally, this is zone RD2, which could be a lot higher density. But this looks at a different approach, like Commissioner Fisher was talking about, a chance to have similar density, but yet putting just smaller residential closer together. And I think in these times, I've been in neighborhoods like this in other states and these can be really beautiful little neighborhoods. So I'm supportive of this and I think it'll work well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments, discussion?
I would just piggyback on that and just say that I think it's needed for some affordable or some more accessible housing. So I'll be voting in favor as well.
Very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of item 5B, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item 5B has been passed. Next item.
Item 5C is a petition, the project boundary for tax increment finance district number 26.
Good evening, Commissioner. Dustin Powers with Planning and Development Services. To expedite our presentation tonight, I'm going to actually present on items 5C and 5D at the same time here. And we'll have to address each item separately after I'm done. But it does make for a better presentation if we address both of these at the same time. So the next two items on your agenda are related to tax increment finance district number 26 to the city of Sioux Falls. And it's for the development of accessible housing units to the city. The applicant is Nielsen Developments. And Kelly is here and be able to answer any questions following the presentation. The city operates or has been following recommendations of the 2026 Housing Action Plan, which was established by the Sioux Falls Accessible Housing Advisory Board. One of the recommendations of that was to come up with guidelines on how to create accessible housing in Sioux Falls and then how to utilize the tool TIF to help accommodate those accessible units into the city. So some of the guidelines in the project has really been based off of those guidelines that was established by the Accessible Housing Board. Accessible housing in terms of TIF and really what we're targeting for TIF as we move forward with these guidelines is to target varied price points between 60% and 100% of the South Dakota first-time homebuyer pricing. Currently, that pricing is set by the South Dakota Housing Development Authority and that limit currently is at $340,000. So when we say we're targeting 60% to 100% of that value, we're targeting homes between $204,000 and $340,000 with this type of incentive program. The principles that really guided some of those guidelines were those to target those various price points, work within the housing market, make these homes marketable, but also try to integrate them into the adjacent neighborhoods and into the developments that they're being put in. And so, you know, working with Kelly and Nielsen Developments, obviously, he's developing the larger 95-acre development here and have worked with him to make sure that this is really integrated into that neighborhood and accommodating to those adjacent properties that he'll also be developing, as well as the future properties that will develop around this development in the future. So when we talk about the proposed tax increment district, the proposed boundaries include 9.7 acres in the area of Madison Street and Veterans Parkway. The current area that is that 9.7 acres generates a few hundred dollars in property taxes today. With this development, we would see the development of 65 single-family homes totaling over $20 million worth of development. The tax increment finance request is for 2.14 million to pay for the site improvements that would really prepare the area for housing development. So that would include the site work, the roads, infrastructure, utilities, any of the professional fees and services that would be accommodated for that. Tax increment finance law, according to the state of South Dakota, we cannot use it to build housing. What we can use it for is for these site prep activities, such as that infrastructure. Following the development of all of the lots, we do anticipate and project that there'll be over $300,000 collected annually from these properties that, for the time being, during the TIF period, would be paid to help pay down the TIF expenses that are being requested here tonight. But also, those would be then funds that would go to the taxing jurisdictions once the tax increment district is dissolved. I won't hit on the zoning too much because that was just our previous item. But we are bringing forward, obviously, this RCD district to accommodate some of the smaller lots and different setbacks that really help us accommodate the accessible housing that we're targeting with this project. So the project details, 65 single-family homes would be built. 39 of those lots are units, unit type A and B, which are shown on the screen. Those are single-family slab-on-grade homes that will be built. 13 twin-home lots, or a total of 26 twin homes, will be built in the area surrounding the RCD district and those single-family slab-on-grade homes for additional 26 units, so a total of 65 units. When we look at South Dakota codified law related to tax increment financing, it's important to measure against the affordable housing definition that the state has defined. As long as all of the homes within the district are under first-time homebuyer pricing, the state considers that an affordable housing TIF district. And so what you'll see on the next few slides as we go through each of the unit types, Kelly's pricing will be below the first-time homebuyer pricing that's currently set. Therefore, we can meet the definition of affordable housing. So unit type A is a 978-square-foot, single-family slab-on-grade home, two bedrooms, one bathroom. Again, these are with the two-stall driveways, but the one-stall garage. The first unit type A will be priced at or below $232,000. Unit type B, a little bit larger unit, still slab-on-grade, three bedrooms, two bathrooms. slab-on-grade, three bedrooms, two bathrooms, again, one stall garage, two stall driveway, with the price goal to be at 308,000 or below. And then the last unit type is unit type C, which is the twin home concept. These are a little over 1,000 square feet on the main floor with two bedrooms, two bathrooms. They do have a two stall garage, but these do have an unfinished lower level that do have the ability to finish up to another two bedrooms, one bath. The goal for the purchase price of these is to be at or below 323,000. Again, we've seen the rendering in the previous presentation. Again, this is just showing the concept. If you look on the very top of the screen, you can see the twin homes in the background. So this is at the east side of the development looking towards the west, and you can really just kind of see how the concept of this will lay out in the neighborhood feel that you'll get from this development. So when considering taxing or financing, we have to think about a couple of different things. First is the creation of the district, which is item five C on your agenda. To consider creating a TIF, the city must determine that 25% of the area is considered blighted or 50% of the area will see economic or stimulate economic development based off of the development that's occurring. We also have to show that the improvement of the area will significantly enhance the value of the property. So to really dive into those two really quickly, for economic development, you know, really in order for economic to be successful in any South Dakota community, accessible housing supply is needed to support the economic development activities of that city. And ultimately, the economic development activities of the city support the economic development of the state. And so we do believe we're meeting the definition, and we believe that based off of the development that will happen, will this and the numbers that were shared earlier, we are going to significantly enhance the value of all these properties based off what they currently are, which is ag and being able to develop the land to its potential. So we do believe the eligibility requirements to create a district have been met and are recommending approval of the district. The second item, five D, is related to the project plan. That document was attached along with the staff reports. There's a number of elements that are addressed and required by South Dakota codified law. We have to identify the number and location of all the public improvements that are going to be associated with this development. So that's the road network that Jason talked about. All of those are going to be public streets. And so those are the improvements. The economic feasibility is really the taxes that'll be generated from the development. Will they pay off essentially the TIF requests? And we have that within there that shows that it is economically feasible for this TIF to be paid off within the timeframe allowed by codified law. We talk about a detailed estimate of project costs, so those are included. The fiscal impact, or is the impact on the taxing jurisdictions once the projects, before the project starts and after it's completed? I'll share a little bit more on that. A description of how this will be financed. This is a developer-financed TIF, so Kelly will take the financing out. Ultimately, then the increment will then go to pay him back for the debt that he's incurred for the tax increment financing. We also are required to include a map of the existing conditions of the property, a map showing the proposed improvements, a map showing any zoning changes. We just had that item in front of you. A statement of any other changes or whether this is in conformance with our master plans, and we do believe it is in conformance with our comprehensive plan. Estimated non-project costs, so the non-project costs, non-TIF costs essentially are the homes that are being built, and so that's been reflected within the plan. And then ultimately, if we were displacing any individuals that lived in the area, which obviously with this being ag property, we're not doing that. So when we look at these items, both the district and then the project plan, we really look at, from a planning commission standpoint, the planning considerations. And so first, you know, is, does the property required to be rezoned? We've already accomplished that here tonight, and we do believe and know that the project as designed will meet those new zoning standards or new zoning districts that will be brought forward. The project does align with our 2040 straight Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan. And then ultimately, with this being an accessible housing TIF, we obviously have reviewed this based off of the guidelines that have been set and really the objectives that have been set in the 2021 Housing Needs Assessment, as well as the 2026 Housing Action Plan. And again, we believe it has met the requirements and a lot of the objectives that we're trying to achieve with those, with those plans. The eligible expenses, this is a list of those eligible expenses, so this is going a little into detail of a couple of the items in the project plan. As you can see, we're looking at the site work, the street improvements, public utilities, private utilities, the services and fees associated with that. For a total of three point, over 3.9 million dollars, there's a 3.9 million dollars worth of eligible expenses. What the TIF request being brought forward is 2.14 plus the financing cost. So again, we're not requesting the entirety of the amount of eligible expenses here. When we look at that fiscal impact of what would the impact be on the taxing jurisdictions, obviously this land today is ag land, not generating much in terms of property taxes for any of these taxing jurisdictions or entities. And so following the development, this is a mid-course look, so this is looking about year 2027, so about four years from now. We would see $280 of increment coming in for this property. This would be how it would be distributed after the TIF would be dissolved. So one, this fund, this, these dollars would first go to pay down the TIF, and then following the payout of the TIF or the payoff of the TIF, these dollars would all be new dollars being generated and being sent to these taxing jurisdictions. And as I indicated on the earlier slide, this is kind of an early course look at, but once, you know, we believe once the, we're to the end of the TIF period, which right now projections show that this TIF paying off in about 15 years, it'll be well over 300,000 for that total TIF tax payment. So when we, staff reviews any TIF proposal, we really focus on three main areas. The significance of the project and the impact specifically with this one on accessible housing units in Sioux Falls. The anticipated financial need that really necessitated the TIF, obviously selling these lots and these homes at a lesser price is really what's generating the need for the TIF in this case. And identifying all of the eligible expenses. After a thorough review of these areas, and staff believes consideration of TIF is supported in all three areas, therefore is making the recommendation to support TIF. More specifically, staff believes this project significantly adds to our accessible housing units and our needs of Sioux Falls. It will meet several of the objectives of the city, as well as those outlined in the 2021 Housing Needs Assessment, as well as the 2026 Housing Action Plan. This morning, we actually presented this project to the Accessible Housing Advisory Board, and they have recommended their approval of this project as well. So with that, we do have two items on your agenda tonight, five C and five D. We do ask for two separate motions on each of these items. First, a motion designating the boundary, and then a motion for approval. And then on the five D, we would ask you to adopt the plan and then recommend the plan for city council's consideration. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Kelly is here as well, and we'll see what you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dustin. Commissioners, any question for Dustin on this project?
Say, Dustin, you hit on a little bit already, but I think when I look at this, it's critical to show that without the $2 million increment, the price of these homes to homebuyers would be higher. I believe that when I look at it and I see, you know, with building costs right now, that's probably the case, but I would imagine that you probably got and reviewed documents, pro forma is evidence to show that that is the case, and it would be at higher price. Have you looked at that type of information of the developer?
Yep. Yeah, any TIF request we get, we do review the pro forma, you know, sources and uses of how they're going to use the funds. Ultimately, you know, we were able to see his construction costs and what, you know, originally, you know, what he typically would sell that for. We're obviously charging a lot less than what typically would be charged for these homes. And so that's really where the gap necessitating the TIF is created. And then ultimately, we then have to justify what are those eligible expenses we can actually use to pay back for the TIF. So yes, the city has reviewed those and do believe that there's the gap necessitating the request for TIF.
Very good. I got one more question for you, sorry. Revolving around enforcement. Typically, when we set up covenants, you can have an association enforce them, otherwise you have neighboring homeowners with the ability to enforce them. It's my understanding in this case, there is no association. So imagine the covenant when it comes to, you know, must be somebody's primary residence, they can't rent it. That's going to be able to be enforced by neighboring property owners. I know a lot of times people think it's necessarily the county that's going to enforce it. It's not necessarily true. It gets filed with the county, but there needs an enforcement mechanism from an association or neighboring owners. What's, what's happening with that here with that lack of the association? Is it going to be the adjacent property owners, or what's that look like?
Yeah, so a part of this, our guidelines that were established by Ahab, we really kind of identified three things that we wanted to maintain covenants on, at least for a time period. One of, one of those was that we wanted for, we wanted the person buying these homes for this to be their, you know, their primary residence. We wanted it not to be set up as a rental. And then the third, and probably the most important piece of this, was the control of the pricing of these homes moving forward. Obviously, we're through the TIF asking Kelly to charge much less than what maybe the homes could be sold for, and ultimately we want to maintain that affordability for a time period. So we are placing a deed restriction on the properties that it needs to be a primary residence. It shouldn't be rented, and that ultimately, the buyer that buys these from Kelly, whatever that original purchase price based on the unit type, would have to only be able to sell it for that original purchase price for five years, plus the housing price index. So there would be a little bit of inflation they could actually sell that home for, but that would restrict the actual pricing of these for five years. You know, we, with the Accessible Housing Board, we talked about longer time periods, shorter time periods. Obviously, to make these marketable and try to create some flexibility, we thought the five-year window was the best. And so ultimately, in that deed restriction, if any of those, you know, especially the pricing if's not met, or if one of these buyers intend to resell within that five-year period, the city would be notified, and the title company would have to hold them to that purchase price and that sale price that they would be allowed to do within that five years. So we will work with, you know, reviewing, making sure no rental registrations come in for those properties, making sure they're not going to be rentals, and obviously working with Kelly, you know, to try to make sure that obviously we're selling these to people that it'll be their primary residence. And ultimately, the type of product that we're creating here is not really conducive of someone that's going to buy this and then buy another home somewhere else, right, and then not be their primary residence. So again, we'll, we'll continue to work through some of those restrictions as we bring forward the development agreements, and those will be incorporated in the development agreement that we'll bring from a city council moving forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, so I asked this question the other day, and I just want to, so typically when someone does a TIF, they keep and own the property. And so as these get sold off, how, how does that get paid down then?
Yep. So ultimately with TIF, you know, whether it's a developer that's going to own the property or, or it's sold, the property owner always, whoever that owner is, always pays the taxes, and then it's brought back through the TIF. So we're entering into a development agreement with Nielsen Developments for that, and we work with the county to then ultimately any tax revenue that's collected, whether that be from Kelly while he owns the land or after he sold it, and the new homeowner pays their taxes. We funnel all that money back to the city, and then ultimately we distribute it to Kelly based on the development agreement that's created. So it is a little bit riskier situation for the developer in the sense that now there's going to be 65 people that have to pay their property taxes to help pay this back, right? And so we appreciate, you know, Kelly, you know, wanting to tackle this with us ultimately, but the taxes would be paid as normal. Then it's just funneled through the county to the city and ultimately to the developer until the time at which the total TIF amount has been paid. And then ultimately, that fund would, everyone would still pay their taxes, but then it would be sent to those taxing entities.
And at first, the taxes will be at just full basis, just based on the purchase?
Yeah, so currently, you know, the taxes are a few hundred bucks. Kelly's paying that because he's the property owner. This is a staged or phased approach, right? You can only build so many homes in each year. So we'll be building anywhere probably between 15 and 20 homes per year. And so as homes come online, then the taxes for those homes and value of those homes will come online. So, you know, when we did our projections, when we looked out to like really year two and three, you know, with the first year we're starting to see revenue, that's only coming from about the first 15 homes. And then the second year, we're probably looking at 30 homes that are now generating revenue. Third year, you know, so we, we kind of incrementally added that value in and those taxes in, and that's really how we projected the TIF paid out, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, question. How did you arrive at that five-year window for those conditions that Eric just spoke about?
Yeah, again, we wanted to, we, we spoke with the Accessible Housing Advisory Board, and there was a lot of back and forth on kind of the recommendations that we wanted to see. One of the things that we wanted to try to do was create guidelines that someone could do, right? And so if we would have said, you got to create, keep that affordability for 20 years, you really maybe reduce the marketability of the, able to sell those homes in the future as well, right? And so it's a different person that might buy that home i- if they know they're restricted in the future. And again, because we are working with, you know, a developer, but then ultimately his role is to sell it as, because these are single-family homes, we thought five years was the, the mark that gave us the ability to create affordable units, get people in those homes. And that is, that five years is from the original purchase date. So obviously, these homes are going to have different original purchase dates, so that'll kind of be a phased staged approach as well over time. So again, that was the recommendations that came out of the Ahab Board. Again, that, that group's made up of a lot of people of the housing industry that really thought that this was a policy and guidelines that we could get, you know, people interested in participating in without making it too restrictive.
Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners? Very good. Thank you, Dustin. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none. We have a little homework to do here on motions. So for item five C, I would entertain a motion to designate the boundary of tax increment district number 26.
So made.
Second.
So moved in a second. Any further discussion on that item? Seeing none. All those in favor of item five C, subparagraph A, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign? All right. Item five C, part B, a motion to recommend approval of tax increment district number 26. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just want to say thank you for going through the process. I know this probably wasn't the, the funnest process to go through because it's trial and error, and probably costing you a little bit more money to do it too, but I think it's kind of setting a platform for what can be done in our city. And you look at a lot of other cities as I travel throughout the nation, and we have a lot of developments throughout the nation that are just like this, and for some reason, we just haven't done it here in Sioux Falls. And so I appreciate you for taking the time and, and working through it, because I know you're very busy, and, but the homeowners in the future are going to appreciate that. Also too, taking a look at the five-year, I know John was talking about that. Right now, currently, there are some, you know, homes that are built in the, the inner part of Sioux Falls that go through the affordability program, and they have a 10-year that basically if it's sold before 10 years, that you had to follow that index. I know we've had several clients that we've resold that I know we could have got more money for. And so I appreciate that we are having a five-year on that because I think a 10-year is just too much, and you hold that person hostage when they know they could get more money. So I appreciate that.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Item five C, part B then, barring any other discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign? Thank you. Five C, part B has been approved. So item five D for the project plan, I would look for a motion to adopt the project plan for tax increment district number 26.
If I may read that into the record.
Please do. Go ahead, Denise.
Item five D petition is the project plan for tax increment finance district TIF 26 application.
Thank you, Denise. Again, as part of a joint presentation on those two items, this is why I jumped the gun, so thank you for catching me up. gun, so thank you for catching me up. So, item 5D, part A, I would look for a motion to adopt the project plan for tax increment district number 26.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on that item?
Just to add the compliment to the development of this project and the work that went into it, and the staff's part as well.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, I'll chime in with my comments at this time, too. I'd like to commend Kelly for his work on this. I imagine quite the process to work on this over the course of, through COVID, and to get to this point. So nice work to the city staff. It's a new process, I think we all know. It's a little bit of a guinea pig project for the city of Sioux Falls, since it hasn't been done here before. And I think it certainly isn't without risk to Kelly as a developer. And you look at, not a lot of people in town would be willing to guarantee a price for five years. I'm not sure exactly what development costs on a single-family home are going up year over year, but I imagine it's probably about 20% or so, possibly more. So, a huge risk to the developer in this instance, so I commend him for taking that risk, and thanks for bringing it forward. I think this could be a really good model for the city of Sioux Falls, and it's great to see this out on the east side, but maybe it's something we look at in south, perhaps core, different parts of town in the future. So, happy to approve of this, and really excited to see where this goes in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Paulson, excellent comments. Any additional? Hearing none. For item 5D, part A, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item 5D, part A, is passed. Second, part B, for 5D, a motion to recommend approval of the project plan for tax incremental district number 26.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comments, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item 5D, part B, has been approved. Where are we at now, Denise?
Item 5E, and it's a petition, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending chapter 160 zoning.
Good evening, Commissioner. Adam Roach, Planning and Development Services. So each year, we took a look at our ordinances and look at industry feedback, comments from our developers, internal staff reviews, and think about, well, how can the process change? What can we update, and what can we do better? So, little humor there on the right-hand side of you, just a reminder that in zoning, we don't regulate ugly, so. So we'll start with the definitions. Parking stalls, with the COVID and the trend that we see with drive-through services, we're seeing more and more stacking spaces that are required for these sites. And so instead of increasing the parking lot size, what we want to do is embrace those stacking and queuing spaces where they line up at the drive-through and count those towards parking minimums. It's a trend around the country, and we think we can do it here, too. Next is frontage, essentially expanding the definition to include future public right-of-way. So when our zoning team are looking at plans, we're ensuring the appropriate requirements are implemented. The next one is dwelling townhome. This essentially adds property line to that definition to delineate between the renter duplex. Next is highway, with Veterans Parkway in that addition to the city, we need to add that to our definition. And then with a new solar farm that was installed in the community at Poet's Corporate Campus, we needed to add that to our definition, and there was a follow-up slide for that one as well. So, looking at the MD-3 bulk regulations, as you know, the MD-3 is our most dense apartment form. Never mind that adjacent, too, that's a typo, but what we incorporated here is at 150 feet, so we needed a separation distance rather than adjacent, because adjacent is loosely defined within our existing ordinance. Next, this comes from a realtor who approached us. This business is located off of 49th Street, 49th and Western area, and it was, I think, a quilting company, and the lady who wanted to purchase it wanted to live upstairs and then run her business out of the bottom. C1 is our lowest intensity use out of commercial districts, it has limited hours, but living above the residential unit or above the commercial unit was not allowed, and it didn't really make a whole lot of sense to us. It's an opportunity to provide more housing units within our community, and also provide that balance for people that want to live above where they work, as they did, you know, 100 years ago. Not that we want to go back 100 years, but it seems to be coming back as an ideal way to operate a business and live. Next, that's a picture from the Poet Corporate Campus, where they implemented a solar farm. And if you look through the documents that were provided, this section adds solar farm to our UT2 utility form to accommodate those in the future. Next one is landscape standards. There is no requirement for tree requirements along highways, and so one thing that we want to do is require one tree per 50 feet to beautify those highways, soften up the corridors for visual blights, and also the noise pollution, and also enhance the ecosystem. Next, this is the former Lone Star Steakhouse on 41st Street. It was converted to a car wash, and after the applicant had a neighborhood meeting, the person to the south, we were talking through the buffer yard requirements, and as you know, it calls for a mix of plantings, grasses, trees, shrubs, things like that. Talking with the property owner, they wanted trees, just only trees, and that requires an alternative site plan sign-off or coming before you. So when there's an instance like this, and a more appropriate buffer can be implemented, it seems to make more sense to allow all trees, or whatever buffering requirement would be appropriate. And that could include challenging topography, or in this case, it's the vacuums for the car wash are right there, and it just acts as a better buffer for the family to the And as you see in the packet, there are some other minor administrative cleanup items, nothing too major, but if you have any questions, can certainly go over those. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Adam. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Not even on the solar farm, okay. It's all good. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none. I'll look for Commissioner Action on item 5E.
I'll make a motion for approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion, but not all at once? Hearing none. All those in favor of item 5E, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item 5E has passed. We reached item number six. Go ahead, Denise.
Public input on non-agenda items. This is a five-minute comment period per individual.
At this time, if there's anyone that would like to come forward and speak on any non-agenda items, please do so at this time. Seeing none, I will close the floor to public input on non-agenda items. Is there any new business, Commissioners? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
We are adjourned. Make it a great night, Sioux Falls.
That's the way to do it.